All right, today is September 14th. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Call to Order. Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, invite everybody to join and please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Today we have Pastor Marcia Haney from Bethany United Methodist Church joining us.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Dear God, I want to thank you this morning for the men and women who serve our country around the world. Thank you for all city government leaders and their staff. Thank you for all first responders on all levels, from the hospital to those community heroes who make a positive impact in our city. Lord, I ask your special blessings upon all city government leaders and all of our neighbors that you will continue to bless us to work together for a greater city. Lord, now today, we invite you into this meeting to continue blessing our city government leaders who are dedicated to us. Lord, we ask that you protect their health, their mental being, their families, in Jesus' name. Amen.
For Your allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 7th, 2021.
Has every member had a chance to review the minutes? So is there any discussion? If not, I would move that we approve the minutes of the meeting on September 7th, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. All right, five YAs, one absent, or one absent, one, five YAs, one absent, motion passes. Madam Clerk?
Proclamation, Constitution Week.
Would anyone who is here for Constitution Week, please come down to the podium?
All right. Proclamation from the City of Wichita, and it reads, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be resolved that I, Brandon Johnson, Vice Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week in the City of Wichita and encourage citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of our Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties."
Vice Mayor Johnson, council members, citizens of Wichita. My name is Vicki Timmons, and I am the Kansas Society Daughters of the American Revolution Chairman for Constitution Week. And it is with great pride that I accept this proclamation on behalf of the National Society, the Kansas State Society, and the many local Wichita chapters, Daughters of the American Revolution. All DAR members are direct lineal descendants of America's first veterans and patriots who sacrificed their lives and fortunes to help establish this great nation. Because of our heritage, we believe that it is our duty to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. In 1955, the DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by Kansas's own President Dwight D. Eisenhower. This year, America celebrates the 234th anniversary of the signing of this document at the Constitutional Convention on September 17th, 1787. Since 1956, DAR has been promoting this celebration by encouraging all Americans to read and study the U.S. Constitution. Each September, DAR members across the country visit schools and libraries to talk to students. We put up displays in libraries and courthouses and city buildings. We sponsor naturalization services for immigrants taking their oath of citizenship. On September 17th, many chapters ring bells in celebration of this document. In short, Constitution Week is the perfect time to learn more about this important document and celebrate its freedoms that it gave to us. Council members, Vice Mayor, thank you so much for this proclamation.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item please.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 17.
Has every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would move that we pass the consent agenda items 1 through 17.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Council, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Reported Board of Bids and Contracts dated September 13th, 2021.
Good morning, City Council. Hannah Lang, Department of Finance, here to present the September 13th Board of Bids Recommendations. First engineering bid we have is paving for Wright Turn Lane on 21st. Recommendation is Apex, Kansas, for $115,866. Water distribution system tied to serve NRD addition. Mies construction for Groups 1, 2, 3, and 4, for a total of $1,866,588.40. Water distribution system tied to serve Hogan-Chisholm addition. Apex excavating for Groups 1, 2, 3, and 4, for a total of $236,378. Ninth Street Random North Neighborhood Water Main Replacement. Mies construction for $123,250. Paving Kelser to serve Angel Fire 2nd Edition. Apex, Kansas, $658,974.85. Paving Edwards to serve Northgate 4th Edition. Pearson Construction, $93,159.95. Water Distribution System Northgate and Northgate 4th Editions. Mies construction for $37,100. MSA Thermal Imaging Camera Conrad Fire Equipment, $81,166.90. Polymer for use in the wastewater solids de-watering facility. Polydine Incorporated for $136,686.24. Roof replacement for Clubhouse at Tex Golf Course. Aaron Parsons Painting for the base bid with add alternates 1 and 2, for a total of $52,034. 40,000-pound GVWR utility trailers. Certified stainless service for the base bid of $54,580.32. Regular cab telescoping aerial device truck. Altech Industries for the base bid and options 2 and 3, for a total of $133,796. Uniforms for the water utilities divisions deferred to September 20th Board of Bids. Piping improvements and water meter replacement utility maintenance contractors for $17,900. Mini 24-passenger bus Midwest Transit Equipment, $69,122. 33,000 GVWR aerial device truck. Altech Industries for $183,873. Four-wheel-drive rubber tire tractor loader and backhoe. Foley equipment for the base bid, options 3, 4, 6, and 7, for a total of $124,768. McAfee Mini Vision Plus subscription. CDW Government for $89,733.95. This is the purchasing procurement website, as well as our current open request for proposals. That is the Board of Bids recommendations. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. This doesn't go out to the public, does it? Okay, seeing none. That, I would move that the City Council receive and file a report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The petitions before you today are, all petitions represent 100% improvement district and are valid per Kansas statute. We have one new development Buena Vista Edition east of Webb, south of Herring District 2. The petitions before you today will provide water drainage, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. That is the only one we have today, so staff recommends the council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the many resolutions, authorize the necessary signature, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I would move that the council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Public Hearing and Request for Letter of Intent for Healthcare Facilities Revenue Bonds Presbyterian Manors, Inc.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the City's Office of Economic Development, for the record. The item before you today is a request for a letter of intent for healthcare facilities revenue bonds for Presbyterian Manor. Presbyterian Manor is a 501(c)(3) private not-for-profit that is headquartered here in Wichita. It is a provider of independent and assisted living senior care throughout Kansas and Missouri. The City of Wichita has acted as issuer for bonds for Presbyterian Manor since 1990 throughout the state of Kansas through a series of interlocal agreements. The company currently has its headquarters at 2414 North Woodlong. It operates 14 senior living facilities in Kansas and Missouri. It has a senior living facility that it operates in Wichita at 4,700 West 13th Street North. It has one hospice facility in Kansas and one in Missouri, and is currently developing a new facility in Colorado. This is the location of the facility here in Wichita. This is roughly at 235 and Zoo Boulevard. The company is now requesting a letter of intent to issue healthcare facility revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $200 million. Roughly $80 million will be used to refinance the 2013 and 2014 bonds which were used to construct the facility here in Wichita to achieve an interest rate savings. An additional $100 million will be invested in new projects, including building 90 new independent living units here in Wichita. These are some of the photos of the facility that was constructed in 2013 and 2014 here in Wichita. You can see a bedroom on the left, a sunroom on the top, and then a dining facility on the lower side there. Again, roughly $80 million will be used to refinance the 2013 and 14 bonds, and a little over $100 million will be invested in new projects. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Bruce Shugren, who is the president and CEO of Presbyterian Manors, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, go out to the public. Any questions on this item? Seeing no discussion from the public, bring this back to the bench. Councilmember Claycom? Get your mic.
Thank you. Last week, I was able to tour the Presbyterian Manors campus here in Wichita. I didn't get to tour all 14 of them, but the one here in Wichita, and it is really an impressive facility, and I just want to thank Presbyterian Manors for continuing to invest in our community, and when we're ready for a motion, I'd be happy to make that.
Thank you, councilmember. No other comments? The floor is yours. Yeah.
All right. So I move that City Council take staff's recommendation to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Council, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Public Hearing and Resolution of Intent to Issue Industrial Revenue Bonds Sharpline Investing LLC, Sharpline Converting, Inc.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, Tim Goodpasture with the City's Office of Economic Development. The item before you today is a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds from Sharpline Converting. Sharpline Converting was founded in 1976. They specialize in designing and manufacturing of decorative vinyl graphics and brand logos. Their products range from the automotive aftermarket to custom graphics for original equipment manufacturers for recreational vehicles, boats, aircraft, and sporting goods, as well as backlit fascia for canopies and storefronts. These are just some examples of some of the products that Sharpline Converting engineers and manufactures. This is kind of an interesting set of products that they manufacture. On the left side, you can see products that look like they are stainless steel during the day. On the right side, you can see how they have manufactured them so that they can light up at night. These are some of the canopies that they have. These are material that can be stretched over framing and lit up at night. The company currently occupies approximately 185,000 square feet between two buildings at 1444 and 1520 South Tyler Road. It intends to add 26,000 square feet of manufacturing space and will renovate over 13,000 square feet to reconfigure its office space. On this aerial, you can see Kellogg running at an angle roughly through the top of this aerial. Tyler Road is running through the middle. You can see there the two facilities at 1444 and 1520 South Tyler Road. The company is now requesting a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,150,000. They intend to invest approximately $2 million in new construction for the 26,000-square-foot addition, and approximately $2 million to renovate the over 13,000 square feet of office space. The company is also projecting that it will invest in excess of $1 million in new machinery and equipment that is not included in this IRB request. For their facility at 1520 South Tyler Road, you can see here the area that is in white that is not hashtagged, is the expansion area. This is an architectural rendering of what the new entrance to the facility will look like. The image on the left is an architectural rendering of what their new offices will look like, and then the image on the right is what their new employee break room will look like, and just off of that break room will be an employee lounge. They will also have a patio on the outside for employees, as well as a separate entrance into the facility for the employees. Sharpline currently employs 293 people in Kansas and projects it will add 15 new employees in Wichita over the next five years, with average annual wages in excess of $44,000 a year. Based on the capital investment, the company qualifies for a 50% abatement. Based on job growth, an additional 30% abatement. Because they are in the advanced manufacturing sector of the regional growth plan, they qualify for an additional 10% abatement, and because they are utilizing state incentives, they qualify for an additional 10% abatement, which gets them a 100% abatement. No land will be abated, nor will any of their existing building be abated. The estimated value of a 100% abatement on an annual basis is approximately $93,000 a year, with the city's share of that being a little over $26,000. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to costs of 1.07 to 1, 1.03 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 1.16 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Jack Snyder, who is president and CEO of the company, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the bench, and this resides in District 4, so I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Blueba.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and shout out, Jack, and thank you to everybody there at Sharpline. Appreciated working with you guys through this last several months, from going to the ballgame and the tour of the facility, and you really showing us, you know, the growth of the company and what all you guys have went through, and major employer out there in West Wichita, I certainly appreciate your contributions to the city. I'd like to take the recommended action to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Bond and Note Sale.
Morning, Mr. Vice Mayor. Members of the City Council, Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I want to go over the results of our most recent bond and note sale and seek your ratification of that sale. Just as a little background, recall that on August 10th, you approved the sale of notes and bonds. That sale actually occurred last Thursday on September 9th, and we'll seek your ratification today, and then we will close the sale on October 15th. So let me go over our sale results. We sold Series 306 notes. Recall, the notes provide interim financing for in-progress projects. We sold approximately $130 million worth of notes. About $30 million of that was for special assessment projects. We received excellent interest. We had six bidders, which is very good, and we've consistently had six or seven bidders. That's a very good sign that we have excellent access to the capital markets. We awarded the bid to Citigroup Global Markets Incorporated. The rate on these notes, which have a one-year maturity, was .107%. To put that in context, the one-year Treasury is somewhere in the neighborhood of .08%, very similar, and last year, when we sold a relatively similar amount of notes, we sold those for .11%. So again, rates are historically low, and our bid was very, was very good. We also sold a series of taxable notes. This was about $6.5 million on Series 305. We received three bids on this series, and we recommended, or we awarded the bid to Wells Fargo Bank National Association. These were taxable, so the rate was a little bit higher at .221%. And finally, we sold one series of bonds. These were bonds that financed special assessment projects totaling somewhere around $32 million. We received 10 bids, which is far more than we usually receive. Typically, we'll receive six or seven, so again, excellent penetration into the capital markets. We awarded the bid to Fifth Third Securities Incorporated at a rate of 1.57%. And with that, staff would recommend that you ratify the award of the bids that was made by the city manager last Thursday. Adopt the bond ordinance on an emergency basis. Adopt the bond and note resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, go out to the public. Anybody have input on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the bench. If there is no discussion, then I would move that the council ratify the award of bids by the city manager for each series of bonds and notes. Adopt the bond ordinances on a declaration of emergency basis. Adopt the bond and note resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Approval of Letter of Intent for Grant Application, Calfskin Creek Watershed.
Good morning, Vice Mayor. Members of the City Council, for the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you at the moment is a letter of intent to apply for federal funds for flood control improvements in the Calfskin Creek Drainage Basin. I know that council is familiar with this area because it's been prone to flooding over the years, but for those who are not familiar with the area, the basin lies roughly, it's a 17 and 1/2 square mile area that starts at the Calfskin Creek west of Maze Road and extends for four to five miles east to the Calfskin Creek, and then three to four miles north and south of Kellogg. The area contains mixed development as well as agricultural activities in the western portion of the basin, including farming and dairy operations. The area includes the Calfskin and its tributaries, and so by the nature of the topography and the drainage, it is prone to flooding. Over the years, there's been a perception that flooding has become more intense and more frequent in the basin, and there was perhaps a perception that upstream development could be driving some of that change, and so a number of complaints and remarkable events in 2019, May through July, with the intense rainfall compelled staff to carry out a study and better understand the dynamics of the basin, and so the city procured wood environment and infrastructure to build a model and use real-world data from storm events through time to model different storm events, and then take those results and compare them to what was actually being seen in the basin during rain events. And the model was found to be very accurate and produced results that showed similar events off and on through time. But what the model found was, what the study found was, that indeed, there were more occurrences and more frequency of the flooding, but it was due to more intense and more frequent rainfall. And in fact, some of the storm events that we've experienced over the last few years have eclipsed the 100-year storm event by sometimes twice the amount, and so that's what's been driving the changes in the basin. And so with that extent of flooding, staff and wood environment pursued additional studies to determine what type of mitigation options there might be, if any, to improve the conditions in the basin. An exhaustive list of options were looked at, and what the effort found was that a combination of two dry detention dams provided the best results, both in terms of outcome, feasibility, and cost. So the two dry detention areas that would be proposed include an area just northwest of the basin. You can see kind of the blue irregular-shaped figure up northwest of the red line there that runs roughly from 13th Street to 21st, and includes the west portion of 167th Street. A second dry detention area in the southern portion of the basin near 135th and Pawnee would be constructed, and the combination of those two areas would improve the hydraulics to some rather remarkable outcomes. If you look at what the results of the infrastructure would be, an estimated 458 acres would be removed from the 1% annual chance floodplain and create potentially developable land with a significant economic impact. An estimated 149 existing structures would be removed from the same floodplain, and then life safety issues associated with impassable streets to the extent that it's problematic for emergency vehicles to get in and out during these events. For seven streets and For seven streets and 212 homes, those challenges would be mitigated as a result. Wood Environment used proprietary software to put together a video that helps, helps one look at this and kind of see what would be experienced in the neighborhood with the improvements put in place. And so, we were able to lift a couple of photographs from that video clip, and this is the 12,300 block of West Lindale in the Wheat Ridge addition, I believe it is. And if you can imagine standing at the corner of Lindale and Rogers and looking down the street, you can see on the left, after a 100-year rain event under the current conditions, that the flooding is quite remarkable. The streets and ditches are completely inundated. There is a substantial amount of property flooding, and there's even, even the chance here that some of these homes could be taking on water. And then, after implementation of the detention structures, you can see that the street becomes passable, it's dry, and while there's still water in the yards and the ditches, the grass, ditches, and the culvert system is functioning as designed. So moving on to the estimated cost of the dry detention areas, at this point in the preliminary design phase, the estimated cost would be $40 million. The generation of this work and the conclusion is timely because there's a current funding opportunity through the Federal Emergency Management Administration, through their Building Resilience and Communities Program or the BRIC Grant Program. The city and county staff have been working together to pursue this funding option. We believe that the project meets the requirements and the measurables of the grant. It's very favorable as the grant would offset 75% of the cost, and the local match would be 25% or $10 million, which would be split, is proposed to be split equally between the city and the county. So the BRIC Grant funding opportunity has been announced. It's available at this point in time. It's highly competitive. There is a limited amount of funding. This fiscal year includes 200 million for projects across the nation. It's a competitive process, and in order to be invited to apply, a letter of intent is required to be submitted to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. They work hand-in-hand with FEMA on this program, and the deadline for submission of that letter of intent is October 1st. If invited to apply, a subsequent grant application would need to be submitted by the end of the year to KDEM, who would again work with FEMA on the process. In parallel, Wood Environment is continuing to work out the technical details and the reports that will be needed to complete the grant application. We have had a professional grant reviewer that's familiar with the BRIC program review, the letter of intent. We believe that it meets the requirements, and if invited to apply, the same grant writer would assist with completion of the application. If invited to apply, then staff would return to City Council for authorization to submit the grant at that time, and in parallel, of course, county staff is running the same process. At this time, I'd like to provide staff's recommendations to council to authorize staff to submit the necessary letter of intent and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'm available for any questions that you have at this time. I also have John Covey here today with Wood Environment and Infrastructure, in case you have any, require any details about any of the studies or the analysis or the options that were looked at.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I do have one. So removing this much property, 458 acres from the floodplain, that would save a lot of folks a lot of flood insurance, right? The homes out there having to pay for that, they would no longer be required to pay for that if this was...
Correct. Now, the 458 acres includes a number of acres that are currently undeveloped, that are problematic for development because of the flooding, so that would become developable. And then, you're right, the number of existing structures and homes that are in the floodplain, once those come out, then they would no longer have to purchase flood insurance.
Awesome. Councilmember Blue Ball.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Under the, it looks like the funding is a little bit limited this year on the federal scope. If we go forth and do the necessary pre-work, it's not wasted, we can utilize that to apply again, would that be correct?
That's correct. It's expected that this program will remain funded in future years, and we would learn from this process. And similar to what we did with WIFI when we met with EPA, we could engage with both FEMA and the Kansas Department of Emergency Management, learn from this process, and apply again in future years.
Thank you.
CNN, no other folks on there. Take it out to the public. Anyone would like to speak on this item? CNN, bring discussion back to the bench. And I would move that the City Council authorize...
Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking down. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would just like to thank staff for bringing this idea forward. Councilmember Blue Ball and I have been dealing with flooding in the Calfskin Basin our entire time on the bench, and council members before us have been dealing with this. And as West Wichita continues to grow, having this opportunity to potentially get nearly 500 acres out of the floodplain and allow it to be developable is certainly going to be a boon to city's growth. And so, applaud the effort and, you know, Godspeed that we get this application approved, or I know this letter of intent to be invited to apply approved. I know it's a big challenge, there is a lot of competition, but when we see what it can do for our community, city, and county, it's a good project. So I just want to thank you all for that.
Councilmember Blue Ball.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo Councilmember Frye's comments. You know, we've been working on this, both of us, since probably, I think, before we got elected. You know, this has been a major constituent concern all the way back from the Halloween flood of 2000 and previous, and it's something that we've continued to hear about, and it's, you know, it's great that we're going to, if we have the opportunity to make this property developable, because it's a great location on West, it's around the Kellogg corridor, it's around an area that really wants to grow for our city, and it's, it's kind of right there in the center of everything, and we've already got all the infrastructure with the highways and stuff there. So if we could, if we could get this approved, it would do a lot for West Wichita, so greatly appreciate staff on this. Thank you.
Well, with that, since you both worked on it, I'd love to give you both the opportunity to give a motion and second for approval.
I'd like to make the motion to authorize staff to submit the letter of intent.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Assistance agreement for the United States Bureau of Reclamation.
Thank you for the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item at the moment is a funding assistance agreement between the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation and the City of Wichita. The funding would be for additional ASR infrastructure, in particular, up to three recharge basins and all of the associated appurtenances that would be required to make them functional. ASR is an integral component of the city's face water supply plan. The face water supply plan currently takes full advantage of the flexibility that's been designed into the new northwest water treatment facility. And the ability that we're going to have to treat 100% groundwater or 100% surface water independently of each other with a wide range of blends in between really allows us to maximize, to the greatest extent possible, all of our raw water supplies through a designed drought, which for Wichita is a 1% dust bowl-type drought, and an important part of that is these ASR credits. And additional recharge basins at this time will allow for more expedient and reliable accrual of these recharge credits through time so that we become, that we meet our drought residency goals. Recharge basins are favorable to recharge wells, especially, like I said, under high aquifer conditions, because the higher the water rises within the aquifer, wells become challenged due to the mounting effect of the water, and so that narrow column makes it very difficult to get water into the ground, whereby a recharge basin is excavated into more favorable soils, and the water is allowed to spread out and percolate down to the water table through time, and it's much more effective and more efficient. The proposed recharge basins would take advantage of existing ASR infrastructure, especially those things that were built out during Phase 2 of the project. And if you look at the diagram in front of you, it reads from right to left, beginning at the top, the existing infrastructure that this would utilize includes the Little Arc Kansas River Surface Water Intake, where water in the river is diverted during high flows when it's, meets the water quality standards for treatment. It's pumped to the pre-sedimentation process, where the heavy sediments are allowed to fall out before being pumped two and a half miles to the west to the state-of-the-art surface water treatment plant, whereby a combination of membrane microfiltration and an advanced oxidative process treats the water to drinking water standards before it is pumped out into the well field for recharge via either wells or recharge basins. So the current funding opportunity is, comes to us because of the success that we've had, both with leadership in council, lobbying for funds, the success of the federal appropriations bill, the reauthorization of the project, and then staff working hand-in-hand with regional BOR staff to get the ASR project back on the list of priorities, has resulted in this fiscal year, $1 million being available to offset ASR costs. In order to utilize these funds, it's necessary to enter into a funding assistance agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. The preliminary design and cost estimating and work that's been done to this point has been received and approved by the BOR, and we're set up for, like I said, $1 million for this fiscal year, which is, the agreement includes the full cost, but it would offset up to 25% of the three additional recharge basins and the necessary appurtenances. The funding agreement would allow us to continue our adaptive approach to managing our raw water resources and our drought residency program. We would have the flexibility to phase in the three basins, one first or two first through time and through the duration of the grant as amendments are made. Funding for this project is included in the approved capital improvement program. Again, the assistance agreement would offset up to 25% of qualifying project costs. Qualifying project costs include the initial phase as well as future ASR improvements under the period of the agreement. These are all included in the assistance agreement for the total amount of $21,215,800. The assistance agreement assures federal reimbursement of $1 million to offset a portion of the cost for the first basin. And execution of the assistance agreement would provide for potential project funding in future years of 5.3 million, subject to future federal appropriations and, of course, the approval of amendments to the agreement, and both in terms of future funding schedule and scope. So at this time, I'd like to provide staff's recommendations to City Council to approve the assistance agreement, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and please excuse the formatting of the slides you've been looking at.
Thank you.
Staff, any questions you have?
Any discussion from the bench? CNN, go out to the public. And CNN will bring discussion back to the bench.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out that we've had a number of partners to get to this point, and we're hopeful in terms of getting additional funding for ASR in the future. As Don said, council deserves a lot of credit for continuing to lobby for this project. We should thank Congressman Estes and Senator Moran in their offices for making sure that we had funding or appropriation for this project. And of course, we want to thank BOR, who's worked really closely with us, and Don and his staff for many meetings they've had with BOR to make sure that we were consistent with their intent. Again, a lot of players in this, and even though it's a million-dollar grant, we hope that it's the start of multiple years of funding.
Thank you. CNN, no discussion. I would move that the City Council approve the assistance agreement, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Funding for Plainview Water Main Replacements.
Good morning again, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is funding for Plainview Water Main Replacements, additional funding. Just some background on the project. In November of 2017, the City Council initially approved funding for designing and construction of water main replacements in Plainview, which included the replacement of mains in Roseberry, Roosevelt, and Cessna Streets. Also included with this project are the replacement of water service lines and relocations of water services in meters, mostly out of rear easements and then into the front street right away. There's a lot of old infrastructure in Plainview that we need to replace above and beyond just a normal replacement of the water mains themselves. The project was bid for construction in August with all bids exceeding the engineer's estimate. At that time, the bids were rejected. This is just a map showing the area that we're looking at. The blue lines are existing water mains, the yellow would be the replacement to effectively replace all of those that you see. This will make for a lot better serviceability and operations in the future to get this project completed. The lowest bid received the project exceeded the engineer's estimate by $367,000 or 41% of the estimate. Even with our best efforts, there are a lot of challenges in neighborhoods like these. There's current issues with materials, labor, and shipping costs that have increased during the pandemic, and again, the nature of the work within neighborhoods like Plainview, especially with the water lines being in existing easements, makes it really hard to estimate what the actual cost will be. Existing budget of $850,000, what is funded by the water utility, again, was approved in November of 2017. We're asking council today for transfer funding from a project that has been completed. Improvements for the 17th Street and Oliver Avenue Waterline Installation Replacement Project were completed some time ago as associated with improvements related to the Wichita State Innovation Campus. Underruns of bid items resulted in project savings of over $1 million. Staff has recommended at this time to transfer $600,000 of this available funding to the Plainview project. The additional budget above and beyond the original bid price will include coverage for anticipated additional costs as a result of rebidding, and again, there's still unknown issues that are generally accounted with this type of work in the Plainview neighborhood. Staff requests City Council grant a waiver of City Council policy 2 regarding the use of project savings to allow this transfer. This would provide an overall budget of $1,450,000 for construction, utility relocation, and engineering project oversight costs. The project will be rebid pending approval of additional funding today. Staff recommends City Council approve the revised budget, including the use of project savings by waiving the applicable policy. Adopt the amending resolution, authorize necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions from the bench? CNN, go out to the public. CNN, no input from the public. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. This item resides in District 3, so I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Cerulo.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hopefully, we can get this done very quickly, or a little more quickly than it's been going. It's going to be a little bit of a hardship for those folks that live in that area, but once it's done, it'll be much better. So I would move that we recommend to approve the revised budget, including the use of project savings by waiving the applicable policy, adopt the amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
I will second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure.
Good morning, Vice Mayor. Councilmembers. I'm Kaylin Nethercott with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. Today, we have one property to review, but before we do, I'd like to give a brief update at Assistant Manager Scott Redby's request, just on condemnation activity that we've undertaken since the February 23rd council workshop. Since that time, 29 properties have been entered into a formal condemnation process. Of these properties, 24 are eligible for CBBG funding, five are not, obviously. This represents a considerable increase in both the pace and number of properties that are being reviewed through that formal process. Just as a heads up, in October, on the 5th, we'll be bringing eight additional properties to you for consideration, and on the 19th, we'll be bringing five. So the activity has picked up considerably since our workshop. Just as an additional side note, this year, so far in 2021, we have 20-plus properties that have... that have or/or will be addressed through the emergency demolition process. So we've been very busy in the Reagan Building this year. Now for today's business. On March 1st, 2021, the BCSA Board of Code Standards and Appeal held hearings on nine properties. You've reviewed, or other activities have happened with eight of those, and so this is the ninth of the nine that we'll be talking about with you today. It's 1227 North Spruce. On March 1st, a 60-day deferral was granted by the Board of Code Standards and Appeal at the property owner's request, but due to lack of progress, on 5/3/21, the BCSA recommended moving forward with condemnation proceedings. The owner did attend the 3/1 meeting. He did not attend the May 3 meeting, but he is here today to speak with you. Due to a publication error, the public hearing for this property was delayed until today's date. The property's been vacant for six or more years and has continued to deteriorate. As we mentioned, it's vacant, has rotted wood and vinyl siding, rotted fascia and trim, and is accompanied by two badly deteriorated accessory structures. A new roof was installed at some point in time, but no roofing permit was obtained for that work. Courtney Capello, chief building official for Sedgwick County, met on site with the owner in late May 2021 and reviewed the interior of the building and scope of work that would be required to return the property to useful service. He also reviewed the permitting process and the requirements for general contractors licensing for a portion of this work to be completed. Since that time, no additional work has been performed, nor have any building permit applications been processed. Property taxes are delinquent in the amount of 555-84. The premise conditions have been satisfactorily maintained, and the structure is secure. I'll get through the rest of those photos there. And then, as I mentioned, Mr. Devin Pons is the owner of this property, and he is here today to talk with you about his plans for that property and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Pons.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone.
Morning.
Oh, yes. The property at 1227 North Spruce, I'm currently working on it. I have two contractors doing the electrical work, which is Apple Electric. Also have, the plumbing just got done by, yeah, Bob the sewer guy. And I'm slowly moving along with the property, money, pandemic, prices of wood, up and down. And now it's time for me to get the property going again. So now that I've had steps, money, steps to getting the property to where I can have people come in and work on the property, we should be getting closer to finishing up the project.
Seeing the other speakers, I'm glad to hear that you're making progress on that and actively working on it and staying in contact with staff. So the delinquent taxes, the 555, what would be a timeframe you think those could get paid?
The next 60 days.
Next 60 days. Do you have a timeframe on how long it would take you to complete all the repairs that were presented to you?
You know, God willing, I'm hoping 90 days, three months, two months. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Blue Ball.
Is this going to be a primary residence for you? Is it an investment?
It's, it could be either primary or investment. Yes, yes.
But you live somewhere. You don't know that you intend to move in it, or?
Yeah, not right now. It just depends on the family, on my family issues and things like that.
Are you fixing up for somebody in your family?
No. If I do, it would be to rent out or to do some kind of a charity thing, some kind of a help, House of Hope, anything, because it's right by our park. So it could be a daycare, anything that someone else want to, you know, invest in.
Okay, thanks. So I will say, I've driven by there a couple times. I appreciate that property looks better than a lot of properties that come before us and keep that clean, so I appreciate that. So you said 90 days.
Yes, roughly, yes, sir.
But we're getting into winter, so do you think maybe 120 days would be better for you?
Thank you. If I could get that, yes, sir.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Pons? All right, thank you, sir. So, yes, Kaylin, I would, do you think four months could work with everything that you have given Mr. Pons?
I believe so. He's indicated that that's a workable timeline. My only question for you all would be based on whatever decision that you make, if you want it to come back to council or to remain at the staff level for further action.
Discussion? Councilmember Cirillo.
I would request that he come back to the council.
I don't mind that, and I will make that a part of my motion because you requested it. Historically, I have just kind of put in some conditions and then just asked if those weren't met, then it goes to demolition. But I will add that in. All right, well, if there's no other discussion, Jennifer, I might need help wordsmithing. So for, given the extension with the first part of that recommended action, that would be the extension that I would make in the motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor, that's correct. Just make the timeframe as you wish it to be in the motion.
Okay. And then the items one through four will remain the same except for the dates?
That's correct.
Okay. So I would move, well, we would close the public hearings deal, right?
That's right.
Okay, just want to make sure. I would move that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution declaring the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and allow the applicant 120 days to repair the structure or remove the structure. That's subject to all taxes being paid as of November 14th, 2021, and that the structure has been secured as of September 14th, 2021, and will continue to be secured, and that the premises are mowed and free of debris as of September 14th, 2021, and will be so maintained during renovation. And that this item comes back to council after 120 days for review.
That will work.
All right. Motion has been made. Motion has been made and seconded. I doubt I could repeat it. Council, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Temporary Employees Professional Services Contract Amendment.
Bless you.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Chris Bezrookie, the HR Director for the City of Wichita. For your consideration and approval is an expansion of the CINDIO Employment Services Contract for professional-level employees and for the year. Previously, you approved the contract in February of this year. Since 2018, the city has had a contract for professional services, and we average the equivalent of about 32 full-time employees being used for those services throughout the year. As you all know, this has been a very unusual year with the pandemic, and the city's services have been asked to expand in certain areas. And the labor pool that we are able to reach into in a rapid way is very tight. And so we're asking to expand the current contract that you approved in February, that was not to exceed 600,000, but we're asking to expand that an additional 750,000 for an annual cost of $1,350,000. Those funds are already been approved by you in the budget, and so we're just expanding the contract that was submitted through an RFP process in late of 2020. With that, I stand for questions.
Any questions from the bench? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Seeing no public input, we'll return discussion back to the bench. I do have one question. It says in here that sometimes temporary employees transition to permanent employees. Does that happen at a high percentage rate or a low percentage?
You know, this is a very unusual time. In the past, I would say that it did transition at a higher rate than it is now. We're having a hard time keeping employees engaged, as well as the Employment Services operation as well. So unknown for right now.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I would move that the city council approve the contract amendment and authorize all necessary signatures. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Approval of travel for Mayor Brandon Whipple to attend with McConnell Air Force Base to Travis Air Force Base, Fairfield, California, September 13th through 15th, 2021.
Councilmember Frye.
Because we always ask, is this round trip or one-way?
I was going to ask, too. Any other discussion? Councilmember Cirillo.
This is the first I've learned of this travel. Have no idea what this, what this item is, so I'd like some sort of an explanation, please.
Guess I would look to Bob for that. I don't know much about the trip.
Vice Mayor, council members, I think annually, the McConnell Air Unit invites community representatives to do a refueling mission with them, and it used to be a one-day operation. I think it's now a multiple-day, I think, two-day operation. They talk about issues that are important to the base, as well as then get to see the operation, the refueling operation. I'm not sure where this one is this year. I apologize for that, but the mayor is going. I think some council members have been previously as well.
Thanks, Bob. I know when it was one day, I went and we flew over New Mexico and came back, but it wasn't multiple days. I would have loved to do multiple days. Councilmember Blue Ball.
Councilmember, I, they've expanded the, since I went on it, and over the last few years, they've expanded what they do, so I can't tell you if there are additional components. I do know that was an overnight stay. I don't know what they do during that overnight stay.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, go out to the public. No discussion on that item. Bring it back to the bench. With that, I would move to approve the travel for Mayor Brandon Whipple to attend the McConnell Air Force Base to Travis Air Force Base in Fairfield, California, September 13th through 15th, 2021. Councilmember Cirillo.
I apologize. I'm still not clear. Is there a cost that we are approving? What is it exactly that we are approving, just for giving him permission to go to California with McConnell Air Force Base? I apologize for the remedial questions, but I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm voting for.
Councilmember Cirillo, it's a great question. We haven't had one of these in a long period of time because there hasn't been any council-related travel during the COVID period. But now, the council has a policy that anytime a council member or the mayor leaves out of town on city-related business, that has to be approved by the council. And this was not, I think by probably administrative oversight, this wasn't brought in advance of his trip. It's coming as he's on the trip now. But even if there's no city resources involved, your current policy requires it to come to the bench for approval.
Thank you for the explanation.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Are there any appointments at this time? Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. It would be my pleasure to appoint Lacretia Taylor for the District Two Ethics Advisory Board Representative. Thank you.
Any more appointments? Seeing none, I would move that we approve the appointment of Ms. Taylor. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Are there any comments, Vice Mayor?
Any comments from the bench? Seeing none, I don't think we clarified that that was one-way around trip, but there are no other comments than, I don't see any executive session. I would move that we adjourn. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.